It's 6:30. I hereby call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Announcements, awards, special recognition?
I do have a brief announcement. If we can, I'm glad to see that so many of our residents have joined us today. If we can please ask that everyone silence their cell phones and if we can have continued silence throughout the meeting because the meeting is being livestreamed just for those watching at home. Thank you. If you have a sidebar conversation, if you will please step out. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments. Do we have public comment?
There are two individuals sign up to speak. First person sign up to speak is Mr. John Dufresne.
Counsel, as you know, because you are also the Wassa board members, Wassa is terminating the agreement with the city to provide treated water for irrigating the city's athletic fields. That's forcing the city to go to Fayette County Water System to extend their system to fill the athletic field irrigation pond. The city desires a groundwater well as a non-potable water solution to irrigate their water, their athletic fields. That's a city problem requiring a city solution. The council instead has used their position as Wassa board members to initiate action to use Wassa resources and funds to drill two wells on city property to irrigate the city's athletic fields. Though it wasn't discussed, it was strongly inferred that Wassa would own the wells that are on city property and would operate and maintain them. It also was inferred that the city would not be charged by Wassa for the water. The result would be Wassa bearing the full cost and expense of providing a city service they aren't responsible for. You should take responsibility for the city's athletic field irrigation problem and come up with a city solution and stop the Wassa action at the first opportunity. I think this smacks of malfeasance on your part as council members as well as malfeasance and misappropriation of funds on your part as Wassa board members.
Next person sign up to speak is Mr. Blake Hayes.
Good evening. My name is Blake Hayes. I live at Double Trace Lane. I was, I'm coming here tonight to discuss traffic safety on Robinson Road. I had some prepared remarks, but I think after today, I was on the road today, I may just kind of speak a little bit off the cuff. When I say council in this conversation, I recognize that some actions were taken prior to you. I mean it kind of in the abstract sense. Robinson Road is definitely an interesting road when it comes to traffic safety. The entire length of the roadway is five miles. It's posted 40 miles an hour, so that means it takes seven and a half minutes to drive it legally from one end to the other, not counting two stop signs that are present there, but they'd be there anyway. It's got two school zones located on it. One of them is at Braylon Elementary. The other serves the new J.C. Booth Middle School, but it's certainly the strangest school zone I have ever seen. The school zone starts at Spear Road and ends at the right turn lane for the Peachtree City United Methodist Church, which is before you even get to Stagecoach Road, the street that this school is located on. When you come the other direction, it's the same, just in reverse. You go past the street, the school's on, then the school zone starts, it proceeds, and then it ends. I'm aware that there are reasons under state law why this has to be the case. Robinson Road's posted 40. The school zone's speed limit's 25. In order to do a step down of 15 miles per hour, the city has to post a warning sign 700 feet in advance. And for people that know that area, there's not 700 feet to State Route 54. With that said, it appears somewhat obvious to me that there is another solution staring you in the face. Lower the speed limit from 40 to 35. Then you're only doing a 10 mile per hour step down and no warning sign is required in advance. It doesn't even have to be the entire length of Robinson Road. It could just be the portions that would be affected by the school zone in the first place. But to put it in perspective, if the school, if the speed limit was 35 miles an hour on the entire road, it would take eight and a half minutes to legally drive Robinson Road from one end all the way to the other, 35 miles an hour the whole way, which again is not what you would need to consider. You could do just 35 that part where the school zone is. It just seems strange to me that one minute's worth of people's time is not worth lowering the speed limit to protect the kids in the school zone, which is the entire reason why it's there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more?
There are no additional speakers.
Agenda changes, counsel? Any?
No.
No. Minutes, September 7th, 2023, regular meeting minutes, September 7th, 2023, executive session minutes. And Mr. Holland, I think you have one correction?
Yes, I have one correction on that. On page 15, it talks about the Bill Kelly Memorial Golf Classic, which is going to be on October the 9th. The minute stated October the 29th, so that's an incorrect date. It's going to be on the 9th at Braylon Country Club. This is a Tunnels to Towers event.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'd move that we approve the September 7th, 2023, regular meeting minutes with the correction and the September 7th, 2023, executive session minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda items, A, consider the purchase of a slope mower, B, consider the purchase of a street sweeper, C, consider stormwater facility maintenance agreement with certainty, D, resolution lease purchase, Government Finance Corporation, Inc., E, consider planning commission appointments, and F, consider airport authority appointments. Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I recommend approval for the consent agenda items A through F as read.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And before we go on, I just want to highlight, in case they're here tonight, what we just approved was volunteers who will be serving terms on both our planning commission and our airport authority. So if you're here, would you please stand up? Felicia Reeves will serve another four years on the planning commission. Andrew Criss as alternate will bump up to take the now vacated seat as of the end of this month, vacated by Michael Link, who is stepping down from the planning commission so that he can pursue volunteer opportunities in other ways in Peachtree City. And that leaves our new alternate on the planning commission as Ray Leota. Additionally, Gary Zarlango has been appointed to a five-year term on our airport authority, and Miranda Shockley will serve a year as the, will serve a year as the alternate. If you're in the room, would you stand up at this time? Please join me in thanking our volunteers. Public hearings, 9/23/04, rezoning of 1999 and 2011, Highway 54, from O.I. Office to G.C. General Commercial.
I'll read the protocol. When the public hearing is opened, members of council will become hearers. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares the hearing complete. First, city staff will present the requests and provide an assessment of compliance with city code. Then the mayor will allow up to 10 minutes for speakers on each side of the issue to present evidence. No individual member of the public will be given more than five minutes to speak. Time limits may only be extended by a majority vote of council and will be divided equally between those supporting and those opposing the issue. The mayor will recognize the applicant and those supporting the issue to present evidence. Remarks will be limited to a total of 10 minutes. The mayor will then recognize those opposing the issue to present evidence for up to 10 minutes. Prior to closing the public hearing, city staff and the public will be given the opportunity to ask questions of either or both sides of the issue. When the mayor and council are assured that the presentation of evidence is complete, the public hearing shall be ended, and the council may then debate the issue and render a decision. All speakers from the public are asked to follow these rules. One, please wait to be recognized by the mayor. Two, come to the microphone and state your name and neighborhood prior to making remarks. Three, keep individual remarks under five minutes and do not repeat comments. And four, address all comments to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll present a brief overview of the facts of the request for rezoning, and then the applicant will be able to come up and make, make their case. The property is located on the east side of the city, as you're going towards Fayetteville, at the, near the intersection of 54 and Sumner Road. There's a traffic signal there. It is currently zoned O.I. with conditions. It was annexed into the city back in 2013. They are existing single-family homes that were converted to office uses, and then they were annexed in 2013. And when they were annexed in, they were brought in with certain conditions, some of which staff will discuss in a, subsequently. The future land use for this, it is located in a village center, which you can see there by the dark black outline. It is designated for a future land use of office. The future, the comprehensive plan says that the, that commercial uses, along with office and high-density residential, are appropriate uses in a village center. However, the future land use map actually shows this as office because of the step-down land use model. That is where you would like to see, you would like to see a higher intensity in the center of commercial stepping down to office and then residential as you go along. The purpose of this step-down process is to buffer incompatible uses. So in this case, the future land use plan calls for office because it is buffering that commercial across from Highway 54 against the low-density residential that is located on the other side of Sumner Road. The applicant is requesting to redevelop both properties into one development for a car wash facility. Therefore, they're asking for the general commercial or G.C. zoning district. And I've discussed the, I got ahead of myself and discussed the land use model. The planning commission held their public hearing on September 11th, where they did end up recommending denial to you through a unanimous vote. And these bullet points summarize some of the comments that were brought up by either the public or the planning commissioners. One, there was expressed a desire for a car wash on the east side of the city. There was a significant discussion about noise impacts on the nearby residents, traffic impacts, lack of cart path on Sumner Road. Somebody brought up some existing pressure, water, water pressure in the area, and the planning commission spent some time talking about the desire to have the building match the Peachtree City aesthetics through their architectural style. So staff is of the opinion that since it doesn't meet the future land use map or the step-down land use model of the comprehensive plan, that it doesn't meet most of the criteria for the rezoning. However, should city council recommend, or should the city council approve this, we would like to have you consider the following conditions as part of that approval. There is now a condition on the property that there should have no access to Sumner Road. Staff recommends that that continue so that there would be no vehicular access to Sumner Road. And the state, the ordinance requires a 25-foot buffer along Sumner Road, but in this case, staff is recommending that that buffer remain undisturbed and that additional landscaping may be required in order to achieve an evergreen buffer. And then I do believe the applicant has a presentation that they'd like to make to you.
All right.
Mayor, council members, my name's Stephen Jones with the law firm of Taylor &amp; Gostuma, here today on behalf of the applicant 3F. I'm accompanied today by a number of individuals. First, Mr. Maney Kalanides. He is the founder of Foamworks. Also accompanied by Mr. Chad Floyd, who is involved as a partner with this project, accompanied by our consultant, Mike Bodker, as well as the property owners, Mr. Paletta and Dr. Bost. I want to start out by telling you a little bit about Foamworks. Foamworks prides itself on being what we call an auto spa as opposed to just a car wash. An auto spa is differentiated from a car wash because it's really a Class A operator. The site is cleaned daily, it's focused on customer service, it has industry-leading pay, and it hires from within the community. It also prides itself on its philanthropic endeavors such as charity events, fundraisers, things like that. A couple other important things about Foamworks is that it uses 100% water reclamation. So all the water that goes in is stored in underground cisterns, cleaned, it goes through an osmosis process, and then it's reused again in the car wash. That's pretty, that's industry-leading, and it's also cutting edge. Foamworks also has specialized internal mechanics and machines as well as specialized internal chemicals that allow it, and it prides itself on being able to wash any caliber of car. I'm sure we've all been through, car washes attached to maybe a gas station, and you come out and your paint doesn't look so great, right? Foamworks prides itself because its internal mechanics allow it, and it guarantees that you can take any level or trim level of car through this and be assured that it will come out clean and unharmed. Here's the subject property. Subject properties, collectively 1.9 acres, currently zoned O.N.I., proposing to go to G.C. As you'll see on the zoning map, this is, we pulled this from the online zoning map. This parcel, as staff noted, came in as an annexation with a bulk of O.N.I. properties, which you will see. Get my clicker to work. Here. The top end has been developed into an office park, medical office park, which the southern tip has never. You'll hear some comments later in your public hearing from the property owners about how long they've marketed it, marketed it, and that it's currently zoned. They don't have a reasonably economic viable use. They have not received any offer on the property as presently zoned, allowing them to utilize it, allowing them to dispose of it. Both property owners are currently using the property for their own personal business use, but there is no other viable use which they've been able to achieve there. You'll also notice from the map that the predominant prevailing trend up and down this section of the state highway is to G.C. and other commercial uses. Beginning somewhat before COVID-19 and leading past COVID-19 to where we are today, the office use has taken in the market a substantial downturn. We've all seen and read the stories in the paper about how offices are being converted to residential uses. There's an extreme vacancy rate among offices in the Atlanta metropolitan area. Office is just not where the market is driving. And what you'll hear from the property owners later is that for almost a decade, even before COVID, with these specific parcels, the property in the market has shown that O.N.I. is just not a viable zoning here. So that's where Foamworks comes in. And thankfully, Foamworks is a step above the other auto uses which have made offers on this property but have not proceeded to the stage to get the property rezoned so that it could be disposed of, and the property owners could recognize a constitutional return on the property. What you have here is a standard Foamworks site. We've pushed the building up to the road furniture, and you'll see in the renderings, that's to give a nice facade at the roadway. Planning commission did reference some aesthetic concerns, and what's great about this location of Foamworks as a company is this is an opportunity. Foamworks is always amiable to working with the city to make sure that the end product matches the city's aesthetic concerns. So we'd be more than happy to discuss that going forward, even as a proposed condition should the council see fit. You'll also see what we propose here, and as Kai referenced, that across Sumner Road, there are residences, which is quite commonplace in this section of 54. There is a large number of commercially zoned properties which abut residential uses. You'll see those here. Really, almost every G.C. parcel or commercially used parcel abuts a residential at, at some point. From top here at Smoke Rise, you've got the currently undeveloped commercial here. This mixed use here, which is a mixture of commercial and office uses. Commercial here which busts a residential to the back. Commercial here which busts residential there, as well as commercial here which busts residential on the rear. So we see a predominant prevailing trend towards this, and so that's what you have before you. Here's the renderings of a Foamworks building. Again, we've maximized the height on the building, but we are, again, open to discussing the aesthetics. But tonight, we're here to talk about the use and the current zoning applied to this specific property. But we did want to give you an idea of kind of the Class A, top-of-the-line facility that Foamworks builds. Foamworks would expect, and I'll defer to Maney on this, Maney, this build would be quite expensive. What would you estimate this?
Real estate included, somewhere between $5.5 and $6.5 million.
Foamworks currently has a number of sites throughout the state of Georgia. They've been growing rapidly, and one thing that we've really prided ourselves on is being able to fit in whichever jurisdiction we've located in. So I want to walk through your rezoning factors, if I may. Your rezoning factors, which are set out in Section 1304D of your zoning ordinance, this is where the council has codified the exclusive criteria that it sees fit by which it should judge rezoning applications. The comp plan does label this property as O.N.I., but as the property owners will attest to later, that does not afford them an economically viable and constitutional use of this property. The O.N.I. tracks the zoning of this, and the zoning is not fitting the development trend and the zoning trend of this section. And that's factor one. Factor two is whether the proposed use is suitable in view of the uses and development of adjacent nearby properties. As we went through the zoning map, the development trend is clearly towards G.C., as is the zoning trend. And as I mentioned earlier, office institutional from a practical standpoint and from the standpoint of looking at the trend on your zoning map is an outlier. And in the current marketplace, it is a vestige of prior antiquated market conditions. And that's just the facts of the post-COVID world we live in. Number three, whether the zoning proposal, and this is factor three, of course, will adversely affect the existing use and usability of nearby properties. It will not. That is because it's consistent with that development trend that we walked through when we looked at the zoning of similarly situated parcels up and down 54. And also, the applicant is proposing conditions and to self-impose conditions which would ameliorate any of those adverse effects. First and foremost, we have self-imposed, and we typically do this at all of our sites where there are a transition between different types of uses, normally a residential abutting our sites. We've got a double-staggered row of evergreens running. There's an existing vegetative buffer, but it's not that dense. So we want to go back with a double-staggered row of evergreens, about six to eight at the time of, six to eight foot at the time of planting, which provides an immediate dense, not only a visual screen, but a sound screen. And it's been proven that evergreens in a double-staggered row have that effect, but more to that to come. And we also propose on the inside of that double-staggered row, if I can get this a privacy fence. One qualifier to make is staff recommended condition. The condition imposed when this property was owned O.N.I. was a 20-foot buffer on, as adjacent to Sumner. You'll see, one of the problems, and we'll get back to the zoning factors that actually address this, is combines the shape of this subject property is difficult. It's got a weird right-angle shape that makes it very hard for, one, let alone both properties, to be developed in a feasible manner. So that's why we asked for that 20-foot on the rear. We are, if the city is so inclined, we are willing to discuss, you know, shifting those buffers around, and we actually would love to push the building closer to 54, but under the current zoning regulations, we cannot. So I just want to leave that bug in your ear as we proceed forward. Finally, condition number four is whether the property will be, whether the property be affected by the zoning has a reasonably economic, a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. It doesn't. Again, we'll have the property owners comment in a minute, and I've reiterated it, so I won't belabor the point. But it doesn't have a use. The market has not tendered an offer almost a decade that these properties have been on the market as presently zoned. That's a problem. That's a problem for the owners. Number five, whether the zoning proposal will result in a use which would or ca, would or could cause an excessive or burdensome use on existing facilities, transportation, schools, utilities, streets. Well, this isn't residential. It's not going to have any effect on schools. As utilities, you saw the planning commission had some concerns about water pressure. Foamworks doesn't pull pressure off the system. Foamworks actually has, and most car washes have, a system within them that creates their own water pressure because you can't rely on pressure. Some places are, water pressure is better than others, as the planning commission noted. So it's really an odd factor here. Transportation, you'll see in your packet, you've got a transportation study. It's actually a trip generation memo that says that car washes as a use are more trip pullers than they are trip generators. In other words, passersby and those that are already traveling the area tend to use it more than, say, someone that treats it as a destination. That's why we call it more of a trip puller than a trip generator. And so that's why it will not have an excessive or burdensome use on streets or the transportation facilities, in addition to those other items that we discussed. That brings us then to factor six, whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property which support approval. And the market is that changing condition. Since the time of annexation and since the time of COVID, the market has changed, and the market has shown that a rezoning here should occur. So we posit that collectively looked at, the factors support approval. I just wanted to kind of circle through a fun slide about Foamworks and then address on the back end. At the mayor, I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time to address and rebut any other public comments that may occur after we hold.
We'll go through the public hearing process.
Okay. May I reserve time for, to address those at the end?
I doubt, I doubt it. We'll go through the public hearing process, so no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I'll, then I'll go ahead and address a few things at this time. There is, and this came up with the planning commission, this slide is- There is, and this came up at the planning commission, this slide is, you've got, and I put into packets before you blow-ups of this, so if you want to look at it on late and half eleven, this makes it easier. There was a comment or a couple of comments at planning commission about the density of car washes in the city, but I've got to show you that in terms of car washes, automatic car washes, well, car washes in general, there are various different kinds, just like you've got different kinds of restaurants. You've got sit-down, you've got quick serve, you've got fine dining. With car washes, you've got the same thing. You have express tunnel car washes, which is what Foameworks is. You have hand detail washes, and then you have detailing services, which may be mobile or may be in a select location. And those also have different price ports, they have different times, they have different styles, they have different building needs. You'll see that express tunnel car washes, there is none on the east side of Peachtree City. The only ones that there, on the east side. Here's the proposed Foameworks location. You'll see Foameworks' logo here. You have, on the south side, you have Riptide Car Wash. Okay? And then on the east side, you've got Caliber. Caliber's frankly a little hard to get to. Riptide is out of the way for the vast majority of the city. So Foameworks presents an opportunity to locate a use where it's needed. The other car wash uses or car detailing uses which were mentioned at the planning commission relate to hand washes and detailing services. You do have on this side a custom detailing and a similar use, but again, those are hand details, and hand details typically tend to be, it's a different use, right? And then you've also got detailing services, which are exorbitantly more expensive and time-consuming, and you've got those on the north side and the center on the south side. You have those populated throughout, but you don't have an automatic tunnel anywhere on the east side. And for that matter, there's not one on the entire stretch of 54 between Fayetteville and Peachtree City. Noise, we heard a lot about noise at the planning commission, so we wanted to address that. We got proactive, we went out, and, well, first and foremost, you'll see in a second, we took some measurements at the site of existing noise in the surrounding areas. But the biggest, the only thing at a car wash site which would generate noise is a vacuum producer. But we utilize a high-end method or a high-end product of vacuums, which has an enclosure in it. And I also have this, they're called vacuum producers, and they shut on and off, the effect being that they reduce the decibel level to...
Less than the normal street traffic on any street.
Correct. So you'll see traffic on a busy street between 75 to 85 decibels. We're at 72 decibels.
And that 72 decibels without the, we build a compartment around the producer, so those decibels are with the producer sitting out in the open. We build a structure like a small house around the producer and simply have an exit vent because noise comes up in every municipality where I build a car wash, every single one of them. So we've had to come up with this because in the decibel studies, it's not only less than street noise, but in a lot of cases, we're less than half of regular street noise. So we eliminate the complaint as it relates to noise.
And you'll see a normal conversation is at 60.
For Stephen, it might be 80.
That's correct. Manny always says, "Stop yelling at me." That's the volume of my voice. So we went on the site, the existing site, where there's some single-family homes which were zoned O-N-I, they're now being used as offices for the existing property owners, and took some decibel readings. Just to remind you, we're at 72 without enclosures. Put that in an enclosure, and it substantially reduces. The existing average on the site right here, where the producer would be located, is higher than what the producer will generate. That's at the site, that's standing right there. Today, you put the vacuum producer next to you, it's lower. The peak is 88. And let's go back to our chart. A peak at 88 is a 10,000-pound vehicle or larger, or delivery trucks or garbage trucks. So it makes sense, it's road noise. Come down here to the intersection of Sumner and 54, you've got a similar story, 77, couldn't pour, it's right, you're kind of the same distance off 54, but you're at an intersection. So your peak jumps to 113. Then we went back to the adjacent residential subdivision. The average standing at the intersection is 68, with a peak of 75. So right here at our vacuum producer, standing next to it, it's going to be 72. We all know sound dissipates as you get away from it. So everywhere you go, the existing road noise is louder than the producer. With that, I'll yield my time to answer any questions you may have. We appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. We hope you'll select Foameworks and grant this rezoning, not only for Foameworks, but for the property owners who don't have an economically viable use of this property as it's presently zoned. You'll hear from them in a minute and before us, but if you have any questions for me, Mr. Callahanides, we'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. If council has any questions during our discussion, we'll pull you back up.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Could I get a show of hands of the number of people who wish to speak in favor? Can I get a show, thank you. Can I get a show of hands of those who wish to speak in opposition? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to speak in favor, please line up to take the microphone, and we have 10 minutes per side total.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mary Ann Grove. I've lived here for 42 years. I live at 140 Lakeside Drive. I've owned a business in this town from 1986, and I just recently closed it, so I understand about businesses. When I first moved here, there was maybe two travel agencies, and then another travel agency, and then another travel agency. And now, these folks want to bring in this car wash, which I understand, and I was opposed to all these businesses coming in, but you know what? I'm not opposed to this. How many nail salons do we have in this town? How many? Tons. So I'm for it. I think it's a good location for the folks coming from Fayetteville. I think it's good. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. A little taller. I'll be brief. I am here for mostly selfish reasons. I have business and several...
Could you start with your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Mike Fitzgerald. I live in Gulfview Community, right at the corner of Flat Creek and Gulfview.
Thank you.
I have a business on Huddleston Road and several properties on Huddleston Road, and the traffic there has become very, very difficult. Obviously, we all know 74, 54 is a big problem here in Peachtree City, so my thinking is, and I have a lot of employees that travel to Coeida County, especially during the high times, and I guess maybe perhaps my hope is that if we spread some businesses around that do the same thing, and the folks from the east side of town stay on the east side of town to use a car wash, that in a very small way, it could help my business and some of the folks that are doing business on Huddleston. In a more simple way, my 84-year-old mom lives on, in Lexington, which is right next to this site, and she loves a clean car. So if I can keep her safe by staying away from the 74, 54 corridor, that would be a bonus as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Joe Paletta. I am one of the property owners in question, asking for the rezoning and supporting that. I am a commercial real estate broker, and I bought this property back in 2008, knowing that it is a corner property across from the public shopping center. Eventually, one day, it'll need to be redeveloped. There are old homes that are sitting on this. So throughout the last seven or eight years, we teamed up with the property next to me with Dr. Bost, and we marketed to redevelopment, and the only thing that has actually come to us has been a tire store or car washes. And with an O-N-I designation, office is just not viable now. So I would love to be able to see an office building go up in there and be redeveloped into that, but office is in the decline. There's nobody that's going to come and put an office in there or redevelop that site, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Cliff Bost. Right next door to Joe Paletta's office at 1999 Highway 54 West. We were hoping to get our property sold for economic viability for ourselves. Like you've heard, there's not a whole lot of O-I going on right now, so. In that, knowing that, I would like to suggest or like to approve the change myself and let y'all know that I'm happy to have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ed Clark. I'm here in support of the rezoning. I've actually been here since 1988, probably not as long as most of you here, but I've seen the growth and the change in Peachtree City, and also have heard both sides of people not for the change and the growth, but one thing that I've always noticed is that the council's done a great job of overseeing and monitoring and make sure that it stays in line with what Peachtree City wants to remain and continue to have the right look about it. I do use a car wash, but unfortunately, I have to go through the 54, 74 interchange all the way over to Sharpsburg. I currently live right off of Sumner Road, and I don't see how that's going to be an issue at all, because I'm in the Smoke Rise crossing area, corners, I'm sorry, and I just think this would be great, and like the other gentleman, I have an 87-year-old mom, and there's no way she's going to drive through that interchange of 54 and 74, but she will go right there off of Sumner Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's Robert Connolly, and I own property in Smoke Rise Estates off White Springs Lane, so I see my property on all the maps that we've been looking at tonight. I am for the development. I love going to a car wash. I don't also like going through the 54, 74 interchange, but I also have teenagers and would love for them to have a place to work that's walkable from the home if it's not going to be disruptive, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? All those opposed, go ahead and line up to take the microphone, and I encourage you to stay focused and not repeat the comments that have already been made. We have a collective 10 minutes.
Mayor, council members, my name is Ryan Holmes. I live at 101 Sumner Place Court, actually directly across the street from the proposed car wash. Lived in Peachtree City for almost 15 years. For nine of those years, I lived in a townhouse at the Village at Lexington Circle, high-density residential, and when we moved there, there wasn't much there. The sprouts came, the gym came, and we welcomed it because the property was zoned that way, and we knew that the development would increase our property values and just improve our quality of life, because that is the type of life that we were choosing and the lifestyle that we were choosing. Six years ago, when I moved to 101 Sumner Place Court, we were choosing a different type of lifestyle, a lifestyle, a little bit more quiet, secluded, more children, we wanted more space, and so that's why we moved there, because where we currently live, at least it currently offers that, if this property were to get rezoned, I'm deeply concerned about how that would affect our quality of life. When we chose to move there, what we didn't choose is to live across the street, literally just a two-lane residential street across from a car wash with 23 vacuums. I believe their hours are 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I think they pressure wash every single day, and I'm just very concerned about how that would affect our quality of life, the lights, the sound, our property values, and it's in direct opposition to the step-down principle. It would be putting low resident, low-density residential directly across the street from commercial, which is in complete contradiction to that principle, and so I just appreciate you considering this and giving me the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor. My name is Regina Pitstick. I live in the Wellborn Estates, which is directly off of Sumner Road by where this proposed car wash is planned. I echo the comments of the resident and citizen before me. He took a lot of my good points, so thank you. A couple of things I want to stress. Also, myself, I feel I have not lived in Peachtree City very long. My family and I have lived here for about two and a half years, and that is exactly the reason we chose the neighborhood we did, is because it's fairly secluded, it's very quiet, yet it is conveniently located to other businesses. I'm all for growth in the city of Peachtree, but not in my backyard, especially knowing what my neighborhood looked like when I made the purchase, and almost feeling like it would be a bait and switch to now rezone that piece of property. Again, we heard, I did attend the planning commission meeting and spoke there as well. It was confirmed that this facility would be open 8:00 to 8:00, seven days a week. We asked about noise pollution, so I'm glad they came today with some facts talking about the decibel levels. I just quickly Googled, and noise above 70 decibel levels over prolonged period of time may start damaging your hearing. So that in combination with the road traffic, I'm guessing it's going to be over 70 decibels, but again, 8:00 to 8:00 every day. There's plenty of other empty commercial property very close to this location. In fact, right across the street next to the Publix, there's been a vacant Stein Mart building. Great place for a car wash. There's also other empty commercial already zoned locations in the Braylon Village. My other big concern about this potential rezoning is, we talked about noise pollution, but the light pollution, knowing it's going to be lit up day and night, and we've looked at the renderings, they almost look to be two stories high, no matter what trees or fencing you put around that. As a resident, right across, probably a road as far away as you are from me, I'm going to see and hear from that, from that location. So I would hope to have your support in opposing this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, I'm Phil Crane. I live off the Purshshire subdivision, little brother to Gulfview. I don't have an opinion one way or the other what goes there, as long as it meets the setbacks. And the 25-foot undisturbed buffer was a concession made when this was being annexed into the city. In addition to that, there's a 50-foot buffer that was made on the Sumner roadside and a 40-foot on the 54 side. And I'll read off of the council meeting minutes from June 6, 2013, when this was originally annexed. Setbacks. All impervious surfaces, including buildings, parking, stormwater detention facilities, et cetera, shall be located no less than 40 feet from the right of way of State Road 54, and no less than 50 feet from the right of way of Sumner Road. On the image we saw before, I believe the parking lot is an impervious surface, and that's located within 25 feet of Sumner Road. We just heard that the legal counsel for the applicant said you can't push it any closer to 54, which means it's stuck. It doesn't fit in the area that you're trying to put it into. Furthermore, our zoning codes say that if you are commercial-abutting residential, that setback is actually 75 feet. So it doesn't fit. We should try not to put things into places that don't fit, and we should also not give up the olive branch, the concessions that were made in order to annex this into the city, because we're a couple of years, 10 years down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Jensen. I live in Wellborn Estates. I've lived there for 22 years, back when Sumner was a dirt road. While I feel, I really do feel for the property owners, I think we've all made one bad investment decision in our life at one time or another, and this might be theirs. The zoning development trend he mentioned is not the side of Sumner Road. It doesn't comply with the step-down village concept. Our neighbor, our street area has grown already by three neighborhoods. We still have no cart path. It's a road people think is a superhighway. They speed down Sumner now. Traffic is a concern, even though it's not going onto Sumner. It's a concern because we walk across Highway 54 at that light frequently. A car wash in my family is a destination, so I'm not sure what they're thinking, because I always have people in my life saying, "I'm going to go get my car washed today." It will cause more traffic. The road has had a water pressure issue. I'm not going to go into that, because I already have the noise. Pressure washing, they said continuously. While I appreciate cleanliness, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week, he failed to mention it was with pressure washers today. He mentioned that at the planning commission. I know when I tried to sell my house a few years back, noise was already a concern from 54. We didn't sell our house because of it. Adding even just a little is going to cause another factor. It's going to raise that. It's going to lower our house values, like, who knows how much, but it will. The trend for up and down 54 that was spoken about is a huge negative. I'm sorry, we really don't want to become Riverdale. We do have acknowledgement from our other neighbors that they are against this as well. Please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dominic Scalmonia.
Three minutes and four people.
I'll be brief. 101 Sumner Place Court, all my neighbors have made excellent arguments against this rezoning. I support the arguments against it, and I think it would be a terrible idea. My wife and I, am I going to retrieve? I love that neighborhood. Please do not change it for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make this quick, because I've got two more people behind me, but my name's Rita Lyles. I live on Sumner Place Court. I bought my house three years ago. Bought it because of the quiet neighborhood. The car wash will destroy that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Mel Salzman, and I live on Sumner Place Court, about 150 yards from where this location is going to be. Now, when I moved in 17 years ago, it was basically forest all up and down Sumner Road, and there was no place for the kids, which means everybody from Smoke Rise and from our street has to go onto Sumner Road to get to the high school, which we have no cart path. And this, I thought is what was going to happen to the rezoning, we were going to create a cart path for those kids. What we're going to do is increase a intersection that already has been no-no to cart paths. That's to Sumner Road into Publix. We have to go through Lexington Circle in order to get across the street. And what we're adding now is a new business in that intersection that's just going to add more traffic and probably a more complex issue to get through it. So I think it's ridiculous, and too bad for the guy that bought that little piece of corner.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah O'Neil. I also live on Sumner Place Court, directly across Sumner Road from where this is being proposed. I also want to say that I've got two babies, two kids, that, you know, we bought this property thinking, you know, it was going to be quiet, residential, definitely not commercial, right across the street. There are no golf cart paths. The only entrance to a golf cart path is right at that corner. And, you know, there's a line of high schoolers with golf carts trying to get to the high school, as Mel mentioned. There's walkers, bikers, you know, joggers, all going on that street, and it, you know, with this commercial property there, it would cause more traffic, so please don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen McKernan again. The obvious thing to me is the traffic on Highway 54. I have had trouble going to my vet's office. I've had trouble going to the nursing home. I have trouble going to the consignment store. I have trouble going across, coming, going east on Highway 54 to turn into the doctor's facility there, at the Piedmont Facility. This is a dangerous section of town on 54. People just practically stop on either side of the road to turn into their place. There should be an access road, but of course, there's no room for an access road. There's not even a turn-in lane on so many of these places.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
So this is, this to me is a traffic issue. There's no room for another facility, especially if it's going to be so packed with people. It's just a big potential for accidents.
Thank you.
And the speed is 55. Woo!
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I hereby, I hereby close the public hearing. City Council?
Mayor, Robin, can I get you to put the diagram of the proposal back up that shows exactly where everything is for the car wash, like the, there you go. Those, you know, I'm just, full disclosure, I was on council when this was rezoned. And that bottom corner down there, one of the reasons that we placed that as O.I., it was so that no commercial would be along Sumner Road, and that's the way, and that was what was done back then, and maybe I can get credit once for making the right decision, but, you know, we'll let that go.
Please. We have a lot to discuss, and I want the people at home to be able to hear.
However, my issue with this is noise. And I know I heard that you can buffer these things with the, kind of like the little boos or revetments, or whatever you want to call it with vacuum cleaners, but I see at least four of them that are open air, right across the street to that residence. And, you know, and what I heard you say, sir, the guy that was the spokesman, was that the decibel level at 72 equated to the noise levels on Highway 54. And no one who bought property along Sumner Road bought it knowing that a decibel level of Highway 54 was going to be in their front yard. So I have serious issues with it, and I cannot support it.
Counsel, Mr. Destadio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Full disclosure, Mike, good point. I was on the Planning Commission. In fact, I was the chairman when we turned this down last time. This has been turned up, I think this is the third time this has come up, back in early 2000s, 2010, and now 2023. I do appreciate the fact that people don't have a car wash on the east side, and I do like a clean car, although my wife tells me I don't get it clean enough for her, but nevertheless. I did look at your technology. I can't, I did, you don't need to get up, it's just a comment. I did look at the technology, being an engineer, and I think the technology is a pretty nice technology. I'd like to see one of those somewhere close by, but I think, as Mike said, I think the problems you have are almost outweighing the benefits that we would get from it. But having said that, I'm also a very strong supporter of what everybody here has been saying. We like this, we like that, we like the way Peachtree City looks. That's why we have a comprehensive plan, and that's why we have a Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission compared everything that they've heard from the people, and what they know is what they've been trained to see and learn, and they've turned this down. And they've turned it down not once, but three times. So I would agree with Mike, that I think that great technology, I would love to see it in any part of the city that wouldn't cause some of these problems, but like him, I can't support this where it's at. Thank you.
Mr. Howitt?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm not going to spend the time to echo the other two councilmen on this. I too have checked it out. I like the technology as an engineer, no question about it. It's water-saving, it's environmentally safe, all of those good things. But the other issues that outweigh those, what I would call good ideas and good technology, is noise. And I don't, I know a little bit about noise, and I can tell you, it carries, it'll be a drone at one decibel level, and it does carry quite a long distance. Yes, it does reduce over a period of time and a period of distance, but the people living 100, 150 feet away from this are going to hear this noise constantly. It's going to be a drone in the background. And honestly, the issue with buffers and setbacks that was brought up, I think that's a critical issue too. In this particular lot, it's just too small. It's just too small. What I would suggest for this project, I would suggest another place in town. We would love to have you, we'd love to have you come into our city, but at the same time, this is not the right location, and I'm not in favor of it.
Mr. Pribler?
As a society, we're going to be facing the lack of demand for office space, and that is something that you guys going forward, after Mike and I are gone, in years to come, are going to have to, going to have to deal with. It's a tough decision for me, because I don't like seeing old houses, or when you come into the city, you see an old house. However, having said that, as I do with all things that come before us, I look at the people who are most affected by it. And how does it affect the people that are most affected? I hate to say it, not the people, not the people in Braylon, not the people far away. And what we've heard from, and I agree with, is that the people in the subdivisions off of Sumner Road, when they bought it, it was zoned O.I. If it was zoned commercial at the time, they might not have bought that house. And so they're against it, and so, as much as I would like to see something go there, I can understand the pain of not being able to sell a piece of real estate because of the zoning, but I'm just not in favor of it.
My main concern is that it does not comply with the step-down land use model, as it's just too close to low-density residential. With that, Council, can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we reject the public hearing 92304, the rezoning of 1999 and 2011 Highway 54 from O.I. office to G.C. general commercial.
Second?
I have a motion and a second on a denial. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Old agenda item 92303, annexation and rezoning for 52 acres located at the end of Stagecoach Road and along Spear Road from unincorporated Fayette County AR zoning to Peachtree City ER and LUR zoning. The applicant is Mike Hyde, but we'll let you start, Robin.
Just a little update. I'm not going to rehash everything that we talked about, because the public hearing has, was held and closed. So this is the area of where we are located. The applicant, after hearing the public comment, has revised their plan and have reverted back to the plan that they presented at the Step 1 process. And that is, instead of having Stagecoach extend up into this purple neighborhood, they would rather have it come off of Spear Road. Therefore, we'll have no connection between Stagecoach and Spear Road, and no ability for Stagecoach to continue out and serve whatever other properties nearby may develop in the future. So it is still requesting ER for the two, they are saying two lots, unless there's a condition associated with that, they could get up to four, I believe, in this area. And then they're asking for the 21 lots zoned LUR. The staff recommendations haven't changed much, but because of that change, and I've put them on the slide here, that were already discussed, but because that change of road access, what staff is requesting an additional condition is that there be a 50-foot landscape buffer along the west side of that road that abuts 209 Spear Road property. Let me point that out. Right now, what you've got, we got lovingly call a flagpole lot, marked as, I think it's a six maybe here, that's 209 Spear Road, and then they're proposing a road serving this subdivision right next to it. And so staff is recommending that that road be shifted 40, 50 feet to the west and put some kind of landscaping buffer between that home and this road. That is the only, I don't know what's just happened. It didn't go the way, the back button went forward. So that is the only change in the conditions that were previously presented at the public hearing. The applicant is here, there we go, to answer any questions.
At this time, would the applicant like to step up, and then we'll, would you like to start by commenting on this change? It's a huge change, and then maybe Council has some questions.
Madam Mayor, can I just have a point of order?
Certainly.
So, Robin, which of these two plans was presented to the Planning Commission?
So the Step 2 is the only step process that has public hearings, and it was the Stagecoach Road design that was printed to the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission never saw this plan.
So is it proper that the Planning Commission never saw this? They had a public hearing, and they made comments, and now we changed it. Shouldn't it go back to the Planning Commission?
I think, Mr. Destadio, I think that's probably where we're headed.
Thank you, Madam.
So let's let, thank you. Let's let the conversation play out.
This is the plan that was presented, I think, to Council with the Step 1 annexation request. The access being only off of Spear for the LUR portion of the development, the two ER lots that are on the west side of the creek would come off of Stagecoach, but the great bulk of the properties would just have access onto Spear. There would be no interconnectivity for a road between Stagecoach and Spear. As we also were requesting originally, the 50-foot street easements, future street easements, we're willing to remove those if that is the wish of Council. What this site does not present are the 12-plus acres that will be dedicated, given to Southern Conservation Trust. I don't believe there's anything else. Robin, the 50-foot buffer on the west side of the road, that is fine, but I think it's already heavily wooded, so we could talk about the landscaping, but that would be down the road.
Is there any reason why the 12 acres can't still be dedicated over?
No, they would be.
Oh, they would be.
If I didn't make that clear, no, they would be.
You said Southern Conservation Trust. I think as a city, we'd like to have it.
You'd rather the city have it than Southern Conservation Trust?
I'm speaking for myself.
That's fine.
Well, either way, is, you know, that's the ordinance. We're happy if the city wants it to give the city, but I know Southern Conservation Trust has expressed interest, and it'd be ownership, it would not be just management like they had with the Nature Center or Nature Preserve that was in the southern part of town.
But you'd be amenable if-
Either one.
-dedicating that to the city.
Correct.
And where do you see access to that, assuming someday it's preserved or conserved? Where do you see access to that from like the middle school?
I think it would come off of, excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I think it would come off of the cart path, where you could get to it, the road, but I'd have to look at it again. That's a question I'm not 100% sure, but looking at just the map right now where the creek is, I think all of that would be part of that 12 acres, and so that would be that. And there's also access there off of whatever the road would be called off of Spear that's going in the subdivision. If you'll see the hatched park there, it kind of goes horizontally, access from there. But there wouldn't be access, direct access, I don't believe, off of Spear, since we don't have border with that except there at the, at the street, and I don't see access coming off of, off of Stagecoach. But again, that's something we can be discussed.
All right. We'll keep that as a question to be resolved. And I think it's important to just remind us all that this may not be a question of yes or no, it's a question of do we want this developed within the city limits, where the city has a certain amount of control, or do we say no and let this development happen in the county? And we would certainly have no say, including leaving open the potential that someday there would be a connection of Stagecoach Road to Ebenezer, which we've heard loud and clear from the neighbors, we don't want. So I think we have an opportunity here to create traffic patterns that protect the local neighbors who live on both Stagecoach Road and Carriage Lane. Conservation, we can, we have the opportunity to conserve the 12 acres and find reasonable access, so the middle school can use it for their environmental sciences or their project adventure courses. Sewer, whether it's outside the city limits or within the city limits, it will not be sewered, is my understanding.
Unfortunately, the closest point is way up the hill on the other side of kind of the school grounds, not where it was originally planned.
Sure.
We could have connected, but way up on the other side of the school property.
Okay. In our packet, we learned that as far as public safety goes, if it is outside the city limits in the county, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, then the county is primary provider, and Peachtree City is a secondary provider. But if it's annexed, the Peachtree City Police and Fire Departments, emergency services will service this area as the primary, and they've indicated that this growth in service area will not impact their ability to continue providing high-quality service and response times to their, to the entire city. Can we get a, could I ask for a comment on that?
Yeah, certainly. I'd like to see if the police chief and fire chief would like to comment on that.
Yes, ma'am. As you look at just the one annexation by itself with 23 homes, we do not indicate that it should be a huge resource drain on us, but looking at it holistically in a multifaceted approach, with everything that's being annexed out in that area, Governor Square, Longboat, and whatever, I don't have anything to compare it to as far as calls for service, so I can't predict future behavior off past performance. So there may have to be some district realignments or changes. We're a little different in the ISO that the fire department uses in determining their level of service, but we don't perceive anything- level of service, but we don't perceive anything immediately upfront. There is a little concern that Spear Road, we would have to exit the city to go into the county to re-exit the city to provide the service. That is there. But other than that, I don't see us not being able to facilitate quality service for that area.
Mayor, I'd just echo the same thing that Chief Moon just said. Our boundaries currently is inside our boundaries, especially for ISO. And our, I have not done time trials to see if it's going to affect our time. We don't have any data to really pull for that, to try to give you an accurate answer on that, but it's inside our boundaries and we shouldn't have any problems.
Thank you. Thanks very much. We had a set of conditions that were laid out by staff before. Do you mind if we go ahead and talk through them?
That's fine.
Okay.
Robin, do we have those on a screen? We could put them up.
Yeah, thank you.
Might be a little easier for everybody to understand.
Okay, so for the first bullet, we would plant environmentally sensitive land separately and will deed to the city.
That's acceptable.
Thank you. Maximum 21 lots in the LUR?
That's acceptable.
Minimum lot size shall be one acre in the LUR. Do you have an idea of maybe another metric like average, average lot size, or can we...
The average is two and a quarter, one unit to two and a quarter acres. Because of the property that would be dedicated either to, or deeded to the city or to Southern Conservation Trust or whatever, that 12, you have to add it all back together. It comes down to one unit, two and a quarter acres.
That'd be the average?
Average.
Okay, okay. 50-foot landscape buffer on Spear Road, 50-foot landscape buffer along the flagpole, the flagpole-shaped lot. Homes finishing, all homes shall have at least one ground-level bedroom and full bathroom in the HOA, shall be responsible.
I'd like to talk about that one there. Most of the homes, because of the market, are going to have a master on the main, bathroom on the main, but not everybody wants to live in the same type of house. So we like to have a little bit of flexibility with that, maybe three-quarters or 80% of the homes have to have the ground-level bedroom and bathroom, but not every single one of them. Again, I would just say this may be a little bit being too draconian and to give us just a little bit of flexibility with that.
I mean, that makes sense.
I don't mind that a bit.
Let the market sort it out.
Yeah.
I think that all these being listed out, the bottom line is that Peachtree City's comprehensive plan uses the village concept as the driving development pattern. The Village Center has, of course, the highest-density residential and the mixed activity of commercial uses, and then a step down in density from, to low-density residential, such as single-family low, which this would be. So in my mind, this dovetails with our comprehensive plan in our land use. I think it's only fair to our citizens to be heard in the planning commission. I think it's very reasonable, given the substantive changes we see in this drawing. Do you have any problem with that? I think it's only fair.
I hear you, and I can't disagree. But there, you know, there are possibilities for the council, obviously, to amend what's been presented. That happens all the time coming up from the planning commission. But I understand that this is a substantial change because the concerns really that I heard in the planning commission meeting and in the previous council meeting really centered on traffic going out Carriage and out Stagecoach and the potential connectivity to the property, the 100 or whatever acres to the east. Both of those have been removed, been changed, so it is a significant difference from what we presented at the two last public hearings. So I get it.
Is that a yes?
A long way for a lawyer to say that, isn't it?
Even for a lawyer.
If that's what the mayor and counsel wish, and we're happy to do it.
Thank you. Any comments?
Yeah, a quick one. So the price range of the house and the price range that, in essence, pays for itself in Peachtree City, some people don't understand that amount. And I'd like to hear what that number is and...
And these will be million-dollar homes.
Million-dollar homes. And what does it take, what's the break-even point, Robin?
$570,000 and a couple of extra dollars.
Okay.
I have a comment. You know, we've sat here several times, and I guess I don't, I don't want to make it sound the way it's going to sound, but it is. The mayor, you've laid out some nice things about why we should do this. It does this for us, it does this for us. And you've laid out some things too, Rick, where you've said if we didn't do this, we'd be getting something from the county. But, you know, the things from the county aren't necessarily that bad, number one. But number two, if the owner of this property was going to take our denial, if that's what they ultimately got, and run off to the county to do it the way the county wants it done, why wouldn't they have done that already? They've owned this property a long time, and yet you don't want to, I don't think it's good for you to come here and say, well, if you guys don't do it, we're going to go to the county. And yet they haven't done that in 10 years.
They didn't own the last little piece of property that connected the greater parcel of property to Spear Road. It only connected to the city through Stagecoach, which at the time was a dirt road. They negotiated with the Davis family, got that kind of thin piece. Robin, if you want to put up the map there, the thin piece that goes on down to Spear a couple of years ago. And that's with a deed restriction so that we don't connect on both sides to Stagecoach and to Spear for fear that that would bring lots of traffic, you know, school traffic, whatever else, in front of the Davis property. That was agreed to. Mr. Hyde has owned the bulk of this property for 28 years, has attempted to either develop it in the county or to annex it into Peachtree City, but because of the kind of the landlockedness, I'll call it that, of the property, the only access point off of Spear, I mean, excuse me, off to Stagecoach, that's why it never developed. Well, that's all been changed now, and we also, like I said, have the access now to Spear. The reason why we like to have all this in the city is that Hyde Park, just north of this, is in the city. We want all this to be part of one homeowners association and not have part of it out in the county and part of in the city. However, if the city doesn't want this land annexed in, it is going to develop. It's not going to remain trees. It's going to develop. And that's, and a couple of folks after the last meeting thought that I was threatening the council or threatening the citizens, and I apologize if it came across that way. It's not, it's just, it's going to develop. I want folks to understand it's not going to be trees. It's going to be homes either in the county or in the city. But in the county, because of the development standards, requirements, whatnot, the wetlands, I'll call it, the environmentally sensitive areas, will actually be owned by the individual owners. That's the way it'll have to develop. And so I think from the city's point of view, there's a lot of positives. And I hear you, Frank, you know, it's not the bad things around the county. No, not at all. Platinum Ridge is out there. You've got these other homes that have been there. They're all nice, but does the city want the opportunity to help mold this, shape this, have this be a part of the community? Million-dollar homes is a positive from a tax point of view. And you have the opportunity for 12 acres, which is a lot of property, to be in a conservation type of setting, either owned by the city or by Southern Conservation Trust.
And the owner here makes a lot more money being in the city.
I don't know that to be true. I don't think that's true at all.
Yeah, Mr. DiStadio, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I just asked him why he didn't go to the county before.
Has he answered your question?
He's answered my question. Thank you.
That was a good question and a very informative answer. Thanks.
Do you have any comments?
My comment is simple, is that, you know, we wanted this to be in the city. I think I speak for the majority of counsel that wants it here. However, my concern was the border on the undeveloped, you know, the unincorporated Fayette County to the east, that was my concern, and I wanted to secure that, and you've done that. And for that, I'm appreciative. And the other thing that I was awfully concerned about was the potential for the increased traffic to Carriage Lane, which is, let's face it, that's a train locomotive, 8:00 in the morning and 4:00, 3:30 in the afternoon. And I think by doing the Spear Road, we fix that.
I don't, I disagree with that, but I respect you being our senior member.
So...
I think it'll still be a train wreck.
Stagecoach goes all the way from Robinson to Ebenezer, and there is a lot of land.
Yeah, I agree with that too, Phil.
Okay. And that road was there long before Highway 54? So there's a roadbed already there.
Probably as long as Peachtree City's been here.
Much, much longer.
Stagecoach, it's called Stagecoach for a reason.
We did hear, we did, we did hear a citizen talk about a cavalry charge up Stagecoach Road, but, you know...
And I haven't heard anybody thank...
But that was Civil War.
I haven't heard anybody thank the council for paving that road for them.
Do we have any wrap-up comments, Mr. Holland?
I have a number of...
Wrap-up questions, well, some questions for the applicant.
I have some comments and questions. I have those. Number one, I've done a little bit of environmental work with my background.
Concise, Mr. Holland, concise.
I am going to be precise, Madam Mayor. I looked at the rules of the State of Georgia for Natural Resources and looked at the Environmental Protection Division rules for environmental planning criteria. And it specifically says in section, excuse me, in chapter 391-3-16, that talks about in section seven, the minimum criteria for small water supply wetlands, watersheds. A buffer shall be maintained at a distance of 100 feet from both sides of the stream as measured from the stream bank. There's three parts to this. Number two, no impervious surfaces shall be constructed within 150-foot setbacks on both sides of the stream as measured from the stream banks. And number three, septic systems and septic tank drainage fields are prohibited in the setback area of 150 feet from the stream. Now, given those three criteria within the law of the State of Georgia, has anyone looked at that? Where there's going to be 100-foot setbacks, because your proposal talks about 50-foot buffers, not 100-foot buffers. So I wonder what happened? How did that go from 50 to 100? Oh, excuse me, from 100 down to 50?
The property that's going to be dedicated either to the city or to Southern Conservation Trust is included in that 100 feet or whatever. All that area is going to be from, and will be, and maybe even exceed the state requirements. We can't violate the state law, Clint. We can't violate, obviously, the city or the county's ordinances that govern where property can be built upon and developed and where the impervious, impervious surfaces and the drain fields for septic tanks can go. So all of that will be complied with, 100%.
Well, it's not in the current plan. And as Councilman DiStadio said, that's probably need to go back to and developed properly to the planning commission. But I do have some additional comments, and these are my comments. It's not, this particular piece of property is not in the annexation plan of 2014. Now, I do know that we need to do a new annexation plan, and that may not be until next year. But maybe at that point, it would be included in it. And as in any good business and any good government, you plan and then execute. This seems to be, oh, give us a, give us a little bit right now, we'll put that in the city. Well, maybe it should be, come under a plan of annexation. That's something that we need to talk about.
That's not a question for the applicant.
No, it isn't. I said I've got comments to make.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. I say that you needed to do three-acre lots there. This needs to be zoned ER, not LUR. I think the whole issue of sewers needs to be relooked at. I know it's further than 200 feet away. I know that you can approach the city and Lhasa about connecting on it, and I know that it's privately-owned sewers that go down the Stagecoach Lane. I understand that. But that's a problem where you're in a wetland and you're going to have septic systems there. Those are going to be contaminating that drinking water that's going downstream. I don't think that's a good plan. You've already addressed the issue of traffic. Thank you very much. The exit over on Spear Road, I think that was a good change. Now, correcting the other type of connections that you had put on the drawing, and I'm looking at the drawing up there, it shows that there is a 50-foot access to the east, and I can't really tell if there's a access to the north.
Not on that plan, Clint, not the north.
Are you going to incorporate and absorb that 50-foot, I guess you'd call it an exit to the east in your next set of drawings?
Yes, we will.
Okay. And lastly, you know, since it's not in the annexation plan, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we deny this 0923-03 annexation rezoning for 52 acres located at the end of Stagecoach Road and along Spear Road from unincorporated Fayette County AR zoning to Peachtree City ER and LUR zoning. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The opposed takes it. So we will move forward, and we'll go through the process with the planning commission. Any last comments?
You would need a motion to refer this matter back to the...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this back to the planning commission.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor. Robin, I'll give you a call so we can try and schedule. I'm going to be out of town a couple of weeks for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thanks very much. New agenda item 92305, Step 2, Annexation Application Acceptance for 11.3 acres at the end of Deanwood Terrace.
That's right. This is a application...
Do you want to wait just one minute?
Certainly. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Okay. So as we've become familiar recently with a couple of the requests, the annexation process in Peachtree City is a two-step process. I have tried many ways. I'm not a graphic designer. I've tried many ways to kind of convey this graphically, which we're doing here with the arrow. The Step 1 process is to give a general review of its compliance with comprehensive plan goals. And then if you all deem it to move forward, then they apply for a Step 2. A Step 2 application has to be officially voted on and accepted, just the application, by the city council in order for us to start the review process. It's helpful both because the Step 2 aligns with the state process, so it creates an official start day, but there's also a city ordinance that says that council has to vote to accept an application, and until such time, city staff cannot make any recommendations. And then, once the application is begun, we start the official state review process, which is a, in this particular method, which is the 100% method, it is a 45-day review process. So as a, as you may recall, just recently, the Step 1 was approved by this council on August 17th. And tonight, if the application is accepted for the Step 2, then we begin that review process. We have to notify the county, who has then 45 days to object, or they can act before that 45 days. And once, if they act before that, then the council can proceed. In that 45-day period, we are allowed to host, a planning commission is allowed to host the public hearing, which at this point, if approved, would be scheduled for October 9th. And then the final public hearing would occur on November 16th. This is after that 45-day period, or if the county does not object. And so the property that they have requested, this 100% annexation method, is located here. It's actually in the rear of the Shiloh Mobile Home Park. It is separated by tributary of Camp Creek. And so the only access point is to Tosin Place, which is currently under development. It's a single-family subdivision. And so staff is recommending that you accept the application so that we can begin moving forward with it. forward with the review process.
Council, do you have any questions? Any discussion? Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I would move that we approve the new agenda item 92305, the step-two annexation application acceptance for 11.3 acres at the end of Deerwood Terrace.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries 4-1. Thank you.
Thank you.
New agenda item 92306, master lease purchase, lease schedule number two.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just have a brief presentation. This lease purchase agenda item, it's hopefully a little more routine and less controversial than the last couple of agenda items.
Don't jinx yourself.
Yeah, I just jinxed myself. So we did a master lease agreement last year with Bank of America, where we did the first draw, and this is, draws two and three against that same master lease agreement. So these would be for all the equipment that we had budgeted for financing in the FY23 CIP budget, the current fiscal year about to end. So we broke it up in your packet, it might say just lease two, but we broke it up into a lease two and a lease three, because we had one piece of equipment really financed at a longer term, the fire truck. So I'll explain in a second. So the lease draw number two is for the equipment that's had the five-year term, and it's, you see, I've listed it here, it's things such as public works, heavy-duty equipment, a dump truck, the police vehicles, they also had about 30 laptops, some staff vehicle replacements, including pickup trucks, and technology upgrades and replacements, so total there, a little over $2.4 million. Again, this was all budgeted, as well as the annual debt service, show down on the bottom for this draw. At the top, I show, you know, the interest rate, it's based on the formula that was in the proposal on the master lease agreement. And when you look at lease draw number three, it's just a single item here, it was for the fire engine, and usually for those, because, you know, one big-ticket item, we can draw that out for a couple more years on the financing, we did a seven-year draw on that, and a little lower interest rate. So there also, you see what the total of that was and the annual debt service. Again, all budgeted, plan to go down this way. So simply, we're just asking that council approve the lease draws two and three, as we just presented, authorize the mayor to go ahead and sign off on any documents we need to effect, you know, execute the leases, and closing scheduled for a week from tonight, it's Thursday, September 28th, and we have all the paperwork here that you would need to sign.
Thank you. Council, questions? Comments? Can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, make a motion. Do we accept?
Approve. I motion to approve.
We approve the new agenda item 092306, master lease purchase, lease schedule number two, in the amount of $3,109,967.83. But I don't have, you gave us two schedules.
How about, how about...
As presented.
As presented, lease two and three.
As presented. Lease two and three, yeah, as presented was...
Lease two and three, although I don't have that cost.
As presented.
As presented.
Yeah, there's a lease two down at the bottom, $2,451,572.69, and lease three is for $658,395.14.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New agenda item 92307, consider bid for rehabilitation of multiple bridges.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Borkowski, city engineer. I've got a really long presentation for you. I'm just kidding. We're just recommending that council award a bid for some bridge maintenance to North Georgia Concrete in the amount of $413,500. Approximately every two years, we assess all of our roadway, roadway bridges for maintenance and rehab issues. The most recent one determined that, actually, nine of our 12 roadway bridges need some maintenance work. There's a typo in the memo, just want to clarify that, it's nine of the 12. This assessment doesn't include all of our other 36 bridges that we have on our multi-use path system. So we solicited bids for this work, we received two, and the low bid, as I said, was North Georgia Concrete. We reviewed the bid, and all their paperwork is acceptable. The, this contractor, we've worked with them before, they did the spillway at Lake Peachtree, so we're very satisfied with their work and very confident they will do a good job. We, therefore, we're recommending them for this maintenance work. The maintenance work's just routine, routine maintenance work that you see on bridges all the time, concrete spalling repair, joint deck work, things like that. It's nothing that, you know, it's nothing super serious that a bridge is going to cave in if we, you know, that sort of thing. It's just normal, routine maintenance. This work is budgeted and available in the 2023 SLOST fund, and we're recommending approval. Were there any questions?
Council?
No.
Questions? Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'd move that we approve new agenda item 92307, the bid for rehabilitation of multiple bridges to North Georgia Concrete in the amount of $413,500.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Council staff topics?
Have none.
I have none.
I will not be at the next meeting, visiting grandkids.
Awesome. That is awesome.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's awesome. All right, do we have an executive?
Yes, we need to discuss real estate matters in executive session.
Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I'd move that we adjourn to executive session for real estate matters.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are in executive session.